It is 7:02, January 11th, 2024. And this is the regular board meeting of the Walled Lake Consolidated School District. Could you all please rise for our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up on our agenda tonight is the proclamation Board Member Recognition Month, and I will turn that over to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board. Welcome, everyone. A school board meeting is really a business meeting. We are a school organization. Our core business is the education. We provide to children from the community, but we're also a very, very large municipal corporation. And so it's important that each January, I think, that we do this, where we stop for a moment and we recognize some of our top employees. But before we do that, we recognize our Board of Education. So before I get to recognizing our entire board, I'd like to welcome Mr. Peterson to the table as our new board president. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
With having a new board president, that means we have a departing board president. So I want to take a second and thank Mrs. Casa Grande for her leadership over the past year. I think that, obviously, Mrs. Casa Grande has been president of the board before, but she's never had to endure it with a brand-new superintendent. And so I'm so grateful to her for her patience and her kind wisdom and feedback and partnership and everything that goes along with it. I think we probably talked almost every day for a year, and she never hesitated to take my calls. She never hesitated to give me honest feedback. And so we, as a token of our appreciation, here is your departing president gift trustee, Casa Grande.
I was told I don't have to open it, so I'm not going to do that.
Last week, our Board of Education held their organizational meeting. At their organizational meeting is when they received their gifts, which is why you don't see gifts in front of all of them this evening, because they have them. And I hope the umbrella that you received paid off a little bit earlier this week on a day that was a little bit wet. I think it's important, before I read the proclamation, to point out just once more, our Board of Education is a volunteer board. Some board members in other districts receive some kind of a stipend for their board work. That doesn't happen here. Our board does not receive anything for this. They come here, they volunteer their time, and are incredibly dedicated and work very, very hard on behalf of the community. There's a lot of reading. There's a lot of question and answer. There's a lot of information to process in what is a very large and a very complex organization. So I'm so grateful to them, and I'm so proud to read, whereas the education of our youth is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built, and whereas locally-elected school boards play an important and vital role in a representative democracy, and decisions made by local school boards of education directly influence instruction in Michigan public schools, and whereas local board members contribute hundreds of hours each year leading their districts, whether it's by deliberating important decisions about curriculum, adopting policies, hiring top-notch personnel and administrators, listening to staff, parent, and student concerns, or recognizing outstanding programs, board members always keep their eye on the goal of student achievement. And whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children, and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 20th, 21st century knowledge economy, and whereas local school board members are exceptional people who tackle the enormous job of governing school districts and demonstrate to the students they serve the high character of civic duty and responsibility that all citizens should engage, and whereas Local School Board Member Recognition Month provides an opportunity to build stronger relationships between the thousands of women and men who champion the cause of public education as board members, their schools, and the communities they serve, now therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education, Oakland Schools' Board of Education, and the Walled Lake Consolidated Schools Administration staff community recognize the many contributions of the Walled Lake Schools Board of Education for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children, and declare January 2024 a School Board Member Recognition Month. Thank you all for all you do.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. And I'm sure what most of you are here for tonight, Teacher of the Year Award recognition. And I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Mr. Russo.
Thank you, President Peterson. Is this loud enough? Good evening. I'm Nick Russo, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources here in Walled Lake, and I am here to present the Teacher of the Year celebration. Our Teachers of the Year are without question all phenomenal teachers. This prestigious award is truly a wonderful way to honor our exemplary educators across the district. Here is an overview of the rigorous process we use to determine our Teachers of the Year. First, a teacher is nominated by a colleague, a student, parent, or administrator. Each building is then paired with another building in the district, and that building determines through a blind review process who the teacher of the year will be for their sister school. The 19 finalists, one from each building, are then moved forward to the second round. In the second round, a committee of compromise of previous Teachers of the Year, a board member, and administrators are tasked with selecting six finalists from the original 19 to move to the final round. The selection committee reviews the application and letters of recommendations that were submitted to determine the six finalists. The six finalists who are moved to the final round submit an essay entitled "Why I Teach." They are then interviewed by the selection committee. Based on all the documentation that has been presented and the teacher interview, the selection committee chooses our three finalists, one from the elementary level, one from the middle school level, and one from the high school level. Our three district finalists will then go on as applicants for the Oakland County Teacher of the Year Award. All honorees this evening are extraordinary teachers who support every child every day. They have shown their passion, enthusiasm, caring, and commitment for all students and their families. It is now my honor to acknowledge the Walled Lake Schools Teachers of the Year. For each teacher, I will be sharing some quotes from their nomination letters from administrators, colleagues, students, and/or parents. We will start with the elementary level. Elementary teachers, please line up against this wall in alphabetical order by school. Elementary folks, you can use the flags if you need.
He's good at calling these. Yeah. Ready?
Board members, if you could come to the front.
Yeah. We're lining up under us.
Teachers, before we begin, there's a little gray piece of tape here that you stand while I call your name up so that we have some sort of a picture, okay?
From Commerce Elementary, Christopher Cooper. One of Mr. Cooper's greatest strengths is his ability to build a strong classroom culture, stated Principal Ryan West. He creates a warm, inclusive, and engaging atmosphere where every student feels valued and respected. His classroom is a place where students thrive academically, but also where they feel comfortable expressing themselves and sharing their thoughts. Mr. Cooper goes above and beyond to build connections with both students and their families. He takes the time to get to know each student personally, understanding their strengths, their challenges, and individual learning styles. He employs a variety of instructional strategies and resources to reach every learner, providing differentiated instruction to meet students at their individual levels. Mr. Cooper is always willing to lend a helping hand or offer insights to benefit the larger educational community by acting as a mentor to many new teachers throughout his career. His positive attitude and willingness to contribute make him an invaluable member of the Commerce Elementary teaching team. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Christopher Cooper. Mrs. Squires treats each student in her own classroom as if they are her own child. She provides a safe and loving environment for students to thrive, both academically and socially. Mrs. Squires recognizes that all students are unique and special and tapped into each student's strengths to help them achieve their fullest potential. She has many former students that take the time to visit her at school functions because of the strong relationships that were formed during their year in her classroom. Her classroom becomes a tight-knit group each and every school year. Principal Danielle Beege stated that Kristen makes significant efforts to ensure that her families feel included in their children's learning, including sharing pictures and videos with parents. First grade is a crucial year of literacy development for students, and Kristen's extensive literacy knowledge and experience allows her to support students in a multitude of ways. If a student is struggling, she continues to try different things and supports, and different things and supports to help that student be successful. Kristen pushes all students to achieve at their highest potential. Students leave her classroom feeling confident in their reading and writing abilities and are set up for great success in their future grade levels. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Kristen Squires. In the words of one grateful student, "Mrs. Locke makes me feel important and successful at school. She teaches with a kind heart and helps me learn." Mrs. Locke truly embodies what it means to be a lifelong learner. A colleague shared that Mrs. Locke is one of the most genuinely humble individuals I have the privilege of knowing. Additionally, Mrs. Locke has an excellent reputation with students, staff, and families. Per interim Principal Kerry O'Connell, she is a team player with staff and has a way of making parents feel connected to the classroom. When entering her classroom, students are observed being highly engaged, participating in rich discussion, and thinking critically about new ideas, perspectives, and concepts. In addition to outstanding academic instruction, Mrs. Locke places a high value on the overall development of each child. She teaches students about character, kindness, respect, and perspective. She is an excellent teacher who embodies a true passion for education. Her dedication to students is unwavering, and her enthusiasm for teaching is infectious. Parents admire and trust Mrs. Locke for her commitment to their children's success and her open and collaborative communication. She is more than just a teacher, she is a mentor, a guide, a role model, leaving an incredible and indelible mark on the hearts and minds for those fortunate enough to be in her classroom. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Laura Locke. Mrs. Avery Franz is well-respected by peer and parents, stated Principal Mark Hess. She provides leadership within our school by being a tutor, student council sponsor, and social coordinator. One nomination shared that Mrs. Avery Franz's qualities that make her deserving of the Teacher of the Year are second to none. She, first and foremost, has integrity. She will go above and beyond to do what's right, not necessarily what's easy for any child under her charge. She is the first to advocate for "relationships first, curriculum second." As one of Miss Avery Franz's colleagues shared, she is not only my colleague, but also my son's favorite teacher. He said of her, "In her class, I knew I was loved." Even years later, while in upper levels, he stated, "Everything would be so much easier if they cared about us like Mrs. Avery Franz." Mrs. Avery Franz is also single-handedly responsible for the family feel at Guest Elementary School, spending years creating summer playdates for children of the teachers, organizing trips and holiday parties. She embodies the educational philosophy we all strive for in the elementary world. Children need to know you care before they care what you know. Her lasting impact on students knows no bounds. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Avery Franz. Mrs. Beth Roberts has worked in Walled Lake's Consolidated School District for 21 years as a special education teacher for students with autism, being the very first ASD teacher in the district. She was one of the first teachers to attend training on peer-to-peer interactions and establish the Students Need a Pal SNAP program in Walled Lake. The impact on our school culture and inclusivity within Hickory Woods has benefited all of our students in our building. Per Principal Lisa Shannon, "I have never seen a teacher as dedicated to creating a culture of respect, positivity, and success like Mrs. Roberts has. And from a parent's perspective, during the short span of time since my son, who is non-verbal with autism, and I met with Mrs. Roberts, I have observed nothing but positivity, patience, and understanding towards my son and myself. As a parent of a non-verbal autistic child, I had no idea what to expect. He is also my oldest child, and this is the first time I have experienced sending a kid to school. All of my worries melted away as I watched my son make such tremendous step forward simply upon meeting Mrs. Roberts. Not only did Mrs. Roberts put my husband and I at ease, she also bonded and connected with my son unexpectedly quick. Her biggest strength is her natural and effortless..." Effortless? We're gonna try that again. "Her biggest strength is her natural and effortless ability to make my non-verbal child feel seen, heard, and understood, unlike anyone has ever done outside of our immediate family." Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Beth Roberts. Mrs. Windiker is genuine and supports her students, colleagues, and school with pride. Principal Dr. Marcy Augustin stated that she has a tremendous work ethic and knows how to achieve the goals she sets out to accomplish with her students. She will also often hold pit meetings. Parent inform the teacher of anything they think is important for her to know about their children so she can take the right approach at the start of the year. Mrs. Windiker has not only demonstrated initiative and a willingness to undertake challenges, but she has also proven that she is an intelligent, thoughtful teacher of excellent character. One parent shared that when their family went through a difficult time, she went above and beyond to ensure our family got the support we needed. Mrs. Windiker took extra care to provide a safe space for my son to work through his feelings and to make sure he was succeeding academically. She was so kind, caring, and accommodating. Mrs. Windiker also makes the classroom expectations clear to her students and parents and communicates clearly and regularly. It is evident that Mrs. Windiker truly believes in Keith Elementary's purpose statement, "to collaboratively inspire and empower all academically, socially, and emotionally every day." Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Jane Windiker. When you walk into Mr. Gurley's classroom, you can immediately see that all the students are engaged and participating actively in their learning. But most importantly, you can feel that the room is filled with trust, compassion, and a sense of belonging. The room instantly puts you at ease. Mr. Gurley understands how to establish a classroom where academic learning and social, emotional learning are both equally taught to students. There is a beautiful balance between the two, with the understanding that if social, emotional needs of students are not being met, academic learning will not take place. Per Principal Mrs. Abby Kitter, "I know that I can count on Mr. Gurley to pilot or try something new in the classroom, as helping students be successful is a top priority. He includes families in his decisions and values, and he values their input, as they are one team working together for the success of a child. Students are met where they are at and provided with tools to help each of them make academic and social growth throughout their time in his classroom. Walled Lake prides itself on thinking every child every day, and so does Mr. Gurley." Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Eric Gurley. Mrs. Mawad is a compassionate, dedicated, collaborative, special education teacher and selfless teacher leader at Meadowbrook Elementary. In the classroom, Mrs. Mawad builds strong, positive, and long-lasting relationships with her students. Principal Jennifer Van Wagenen shared that the environment and experiences that Melanie provides each day in her classroom are both enriching and empowering, inviting each student to explore curriculum in inventive ways to meet the learning needs of those she serves. She also recognizes and celebrates the uniqueness of each child, making the classroom a warm, inviting, safe place for each child to grow as a learner. Mrs. Mawad is able to bend and flex to grow students' thinking and seize moments to engage students in powerful learning experiences. As one nomination stated, "Mrs. Mawad fosters caring and compassionate relationships with everyone she encounters. This is especially true for her students. They see her as a trusting adult, one that they can count on to support them and advocate for them." This is true of her relationships with parents as well. Parents know and trust that Mrs. Mawad has their children's best interests at heart. She is a bright light, an integral part of the Meadowbrook Elementary family, and overall makes Meadowbrook an inclusive and special place to be. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Melanie Mawad. From Oakley Park Elementary, Janine Bauer. Mrs. Bauer creates an amazing learning community where all students thrive because they feel safe and loved. She strives to help her students make connections across the curriculum and into their own lives. Per Principal Kristen Froning, "Janine possesses a keen understanding of the value of a diverse learning community and is especially skilled at helping support children who are second language learners." One parent admitted that she intended to nominate Ms. Bauer last year, however, missed the deadline, and stated, "Now that my second child is in her class, I really want a chance to show how great she is." Mrs. Bauer has always greeted me and my kids with a huge smile and a huge hug. She's great with communication and transparency, which is very much appreciated. My daughter, who was in her class two years ago, said, "Mrs. Bauer is the best. She is so helpful, nice, and makes everything so much fun." My son, who is in her class now, said, "She is nice. We always get free time." And she has great math and word games to play. She's a great teacher, and she plays with us. Oakley Park is very lucky to have Mrs. Bauer as a teacher in my family, as a teacher, and my family is lucky to have her teach both of my children. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Janine Bauer. The elementary folks just stayed right where they were. That's fantastic. From Pleasant Lake Elementary, Lori Carter. Mrs. Carter is a devoted teacher leader that makes a positive impact on her students, student leaders, her mentee, colleagues, and the school community at large. One parent stated that she is an excellent early childhood teacher overall, especially her attention to the kids' emotional needs. Per Principal Jennifer Bennett, she builds trusting relationships with families with her daily interaction and communication skills. Mrs. Carter involves families and their child's learning with remind pictures and texts, newsletters, phone calls, and opportunities to volunteer inside the classroom. She truly embodies our Pleasant Lake belief that together we learn, together we lead. Additionally, Mrs. Carter promotes students becoming leaders in her classroom through her teaching and classroom culture. She creates student leadership opportunities for student leaders in upper grades to be math and literacy tutors for her students. This leadership job is always very popular. Mrs. Carter is a leader herself as she mentors a new teacher for the second year and will step in on a regular basis to do whatever is needed to ensure the success of our Pleasant Lake community. Her positive attitude, collaborative spirit, and dedication for her students and our school community set her apart. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Lori Carter. From Walled Lake Elementary, Alyssa Labut. Mrs. Labut has many qualities that exemplify a high-quality teacher. She first and foremost cares about her students. Her superpower is making each one feel special. This is evident by the line of students that once had Mrs. Labut as their teacher that make a special trip to her classroom door each morning for a quick visit. She exudes calmness even in the most difficult moments that provide children a sense of safety and security. Not only is she able to provide this feeling for students, but also for their parents and guardians. Her thirst for new skills and knowledge drives her to keep learning and growing as an educator. Alyssa seeks out professional development opportunities that will provide ideas and skills to meet needs of all learners. Per Principal Julie Amon, Alyssa is a quiet yet influential leader at Walled Lake Elementary. She is an eternal optimist, approaching each day and even each moment as an opportunity to progress and success. Her can-do, positive attitude, and commitment to students, families, and colleagues inspire all those with whom she comes in contact. As one nomination stated, "She puts in the time and effort to be the best teacher she can be. Even when a frustrating or difficult day happens, she stays level-headed and knows tomorrow is a new day. I would have been very happy if my daughter had her as a teacher." Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Alyssa Labut. In the last of our elementary schools, from Wickham Elementary, Christine Hubbell. Mrs. Hubbell makes lessons come alive for her students. The way she engages her class can sometimes be silly, but you are always certain that the students are learning. Principal Kathy Russell states, "She loves walking into Christine's classroom when she is teaching. She's an out-of-the-box style of teaching that keeps all of her students engaged and interested in learning. I've seen her start math lessons by tossing around fraction circles prior to the lesson. The students start laughing and jumping to grab the fraction circles. They are immediately engaged, wondering what this is all about, before the lesson even starts." You can also feel the love and respect that Mrs. Hubbell has for her students. She seems, she sees them as individuals, and she listens to them and helps support and nurture them. She believes every child has their own strengths and exemplifies the belief of every child every day. Mrs. Hubbell is not only dedicated to helping our students, but also our school as a whole. On top of running the Girls on the Run program, she also runs our student council, mentors new teachers, and volunteers at family events like trunk-or-treat and skate night. She works hard and asks for nothing in return. It is clear that her rewards are seeing students who love themselves, love school, and are excited to learn every day. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Christine Hubbell. Thank you to all of our amazing elementary teachers. One last round of applause, please. We will now recognize our middle school Teachers of the Year. Middle school teachers, please line up in alphabetical order by school and proceed in similar fashion when I call your name. in similar fashion when I call your name. From Sarah Banks Middle School, Barbara Stahursky. Principal Michelle Calhorn shared that, "In the time that I have had the opportunity to work with Mrs. Stahursky, I have seen how much she cares about the success of her students and have witnessed her dedication to supporting the whole child. She works tirelessly to support her students, meeting their individual needs, and working closely with families of the students on her caseload. She is a calming and supportive presence for each and every child." Mrs. Stahursky also has a lot of fun with her students. Her classroom has a positive energy, and she has ways to keep students active in the classroom to increase their engagement. One student nomination stated that, "Overall, she is an amazing and unique person. Even though I was never in her class, she had a huge impact on my seventh and eighth grade years." And finally, from the words of a colleague, "In my time working alongside Barb, I have been consistently impressed by her passion for educating students with diverse learning needs. She has demonstrated a deep understanding of the unique challenges and opportunities that come with teaching special education. Whether it is designing personalized lessons plans, collaborating with colleagues, or employing the latest assistive technologies, Barb has consistently gone above and beyond to ensure that every student under her care receives the best education possible." Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Barbara Stahursky. From Walnut Creek Middle School, Mr. David Harper. "Mr. Harper is an incredibly engaging teacher," says Principal Seth Tabo. "His dedication to his students is truly inspiring. The student work that has developed with Mr. Harper's guidance is some of the most impressive that I have seen in my career. Mr. Harper's students are consistently challenged and encouraged to think critically, creatively, and independently. His passion for teaching is evident in every lesson he delivers. Additionally, Mr. Harper has an incredibly positive attitude as his sole focus each and every day is helping students meet their fullest potential." Some of the comments that were written on Mr. Harper's nomination form include, "Mr. Harper always looks out for his students and makes sure they're okay. He always provides supplies and a safe environment for his students. Mr. Harper always jokes and has fun with his students. Everyone loves his class. He goes above and beyond for his students and makes sure to create a very welcoming and inclusive learning environment where all students feel safe and to be themselves. He is a true asset to the Walnut Creek Middle School community, and we are so grateful for all that he does." Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. David Harper. Geiser Middle School, Megan Clancy. "I am consistently impressed by Mrs. Clancy's dedication to her students and genuine commitment to fostering a positive learning environment," states Principal Stuart Riley. "Her commitment to the Wolfpack community goes above and beyond the classroom as well. She coaches multiple sports, is the handler for our therapy dog, Gus, and in March will teach her students Irish dancing. Miss Clancy exhibits a unique ability to connect with her middle school students on a personal level, making the educational experience relatable and engaging. She excels in creating an inclusive and supporting classroom environment and is a champion of diversity, ensuring that every student feels valued and respected. A colleague stated that whenever entering Megan's classroom, the students are on task, having meaningful conversations, they have smiles on their faces, and express a desire to learn more. In the spring, when graduating seniors visit Geiser Middle School, Megan is one of the most visited, popular teachers. She can be seen in the hallway with the biggest smile, loudest laugh, and the largest crowd." One nomination stated that Miss Clancy has one of the best personalities ever. She is super funny, energetic, and always brings a smile across everyone she meets. Miss Clancy holds up the Geiser Middle School core values of diversity, integrity, community, and equity on a daily basis. Her contributions to Geiser and our community are infinite. Ladies and gentlemen, Miss Megan Clancy. And from Clifford Smart Middle School, Heather Deta. "Mrs. Deta is a phenomenal veteran teacher who exhibits the same passion for education as someone just beginning their journey into the profession. She consistently goes above and beyond to create a nurturing and engaging learning environment for her students. The works of Principal Niall Mactary, I can say without reservation that Heather is one of the best teachers I have had the pleasure of working with. Each day, Heather works with students that need additional assistance, with their work during her lunch, and does not want any recognition for that, along with the countless things she does for colleagues, students, and families. In addition to the quality instruction she provides, Mrs. Deta is one of the happiest and kindest people I have had the pleasure of working with. You would never know if she has a challenging day because she's always smiling and laughing." A student nomination stated that Mrs. Deta has a great relationship with her students and takes the time to get to know everyone and their strengths and weaknesses. She is never rude or mean. If someone does not understand, she simply just helps them. She connects with every student so well that she probably has over 100 students every year, but takes the time to show interest in every single one's likes and interests, and she really is the best teacher. Mrs. Deta's dedication and passion for education is truly inspiring. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Heather Deta. One more time for all of the middle school teachers, please. High school teachers, come on up. Let's see if they get in alphabetical order. From Central High School, David Rogers. Every so often, an educator walks through our door who winds up having generational impacts on students, families, and in the entire school community. This is Wald Lake Central Band Teacher, Mr. David Rogers. Principal Kyle Medier states, "Mr. Rogers' devotion to our profession is exceptional and exemplary, putting the education of the whole person development of his students at the forefront of all that he does." One parent nomination listed many of the life lessons that Mr. Rogers has taught his students, family, and community over the years through his behaviors, actions, and his leadership. I will highlight just a few of them from the long list. You can't please everyone. Pace yourself. It's not all about you. There is no shame in not knowing, so ask and learn. Being nice to others does matter. Life is not fair. You are stronger than you think. All problems have a solution, we just need to find it. Help others when you can, you will need help at some time. Always keep trying. Don't take anything for granted." One student nomination shared that Mr. Rogers is kind, passionate, caring, respectful, responsible, and funny. He is able to communicate with his students, and there is a mutual sense of trust. And lastly, another nomination stated that Mr. Rogers is a jewel for all of Wald Lake Schools. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. David Rogers. From Northern High School, Louis Vasquez. Senior Vasquez has been a teacher in Wald Lake Schools for many years, however, has already made a huge impact on his first year at Northern Campus through his positive demeanor and love of teaching Spanish. Per Principal Greg Diamond, "Being a native speaker, Mr. Vasquez brings his desire to share his wonderful language with our students. When reading some of Mr. Vasquez's nomination forms, you see phrases like, 'He makes Spanish fun.' 'He helps me when I struggle.' As a new student, Senior Vasquez made school easier for me, and maybe most importantly, he cares about each and every one of his students' lives outside of the school. When speaking about Senior Vasquez, one student stated that he truly cares not only about the success of each and every one of us students, but our lives personally. He gets to know everyone's traits, likes, dislikes, and hobbies. Further, he is extremely friendly and loving. He teaches and speaks beautifully. Teaching an entire class a new language is not easy. He handles his job with care, but also seriousness." Another student shared that Senior Vasquez has made Spanish fun and easy. "I have struggled in Spanish for two years, and he has helped me now to understand it. Mr. Vasquez is well-respected amongst his peers, and the students love him." Ladies and gentlemen, Senior Louis Vasquez. And from Western High School, Anna Murphy. "Mrs. Murphy is a passionate individual who genuinely cares about the lives of her students, while challenging them to continuously be the best versions of themselves," states Principal Ali Hamka. "She is indeed an advocate for all students by providing them with differentiated support to bring out their individual excellence. She is trustworthy, respected, admired, and dedicated, in addition to being empathetic and extremely flexible in her approach as she teaches students from all grade levels with varying needs. Mrs. Murphy has a reputation of helping, mentoring, and embracing change as she continues to take postmaster's courses to stay current with research and best practices. One of her colleagues stated that her intelligence, wisdom, and grace make her an amazing person to work with. Anna's actions speak louder than words, as she is always available and intentional about serving every child every day during the school day and beyond. As one nomination stated, "She clearly loves and cares for each and every one of her students as well as her colleagues. I have observed Anna putting others' needs above her own countless times. She is focused on making sure her students understand the content, and they feel welcome and respected in her classroom. She sets a high standard but is ready to help whenever needed." Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Anna Murphy. Let's hear it one more time for all of our high school teachers. Mr. Chatfield, could you hit the lights, please? Before I officially announce this year's finalist for each level, I would like to take this opportunity to show everyone the surprise presentation video that was put together by our communications department.
It's that time, one of my favorite things to do, award Teacher of the Year for Wald Lake Schools. Do you know who I am? Dr. Burnia, very good. And that makes me the superintendent of schools, which means that I do what? I decide if there's a snow day. And then, once per year, I come to a classroom and I tell the students that of all 12 elementary schools across the district, you all have the very best teacher. Congratulations, Mrs. Hubbell. 23, 24 Teacher of the Year for Wald Lake Schools. Congratulations. We're so proud of you.
I'm incredibly honored. I'm very overwhelmed at the situation where you don't see your own ability and worth a lot of times, and I feel this is one of those moments where this award, I'm overwhelmed. My first reaction to one of my kids was, "I couldn't be here without all of you." And she asked why, and I said, "Because students make great teachers, too."
When everybody came in, we all jumped because I think we all knew what was going to happen. She understands us as students, be if she was one. She makes learning really easy, especially in math.
She's super nice and kind, and we get to have fun so many times a day, and she's super chill. She doesn't make anything hard.
She is one of these people that just gets kids. She understands the developmental level of kids, understands what kids should be doing, and everything she does, she does from the heart and from the head.
Just so grateful for the opportunity as well to be with these kids and do what we do with the freedom of bringing our own personality and spice to our classrooms while also doing all of the wonderful things that Wald Lake expects of us as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm so delighted to announce your very own Mrs. Stahursky is the 23, 24 Wald Lake Consolidated Schools Middle School Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, honey. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much. Very surprised. It was all the people walking in and everything. It was a little bit overwhelming, but it feels really good. It feels appreciated. It's a team effort here at Banks. It's about the kids, it's about the relationships with them. The whole process of this being done in front of them, it makes me feel overwhelmed with joy because they keep everything.
She helps me around the score of the class. It keeps me in the position where I'm good at.
She just really helps us with our work, and if we have missing work. My grades were really bad, and now they're really good because of her, so I'm really thankful for her.
She's definitely a super positive member of our staff. Like I said, she just brings an energy to the group. She's super supportive of her colleagues. She works really closely with her general education teachers and the special education department.
I think it's a long time coming for Barb. She has definitely done a ton of work here at Banks with students over the years, and so it's really a great time to celebrate her as she looks at the last year of her career.
I'm delighted to be here with all of you to announce that your very own Mr. Rogers is the 23, 24 High School Teacher of the Year for Wald Lake Schools. Congratulations.
I can't believe it, really. I mean, there's so many amazing teachers just in the school alone. I love being their teacher. I'm the lucky guy to do that every day.
He's just a goofy person. He always knows how to have fun, and he knows when you need to be serious, you need to be serious, and when it's time to have fun, you can have fun. Not many teachers have the same compassion, emotion that they would for their students. When Mr. Rogers does it, it really makes you feel safe and secure.
He's always there to ask how you're doing, and he's always caring. He treats every single kid as if it were his own, and he just makes you feel appreciated as a student.
He just really knows how to get the best out of students in a great way of doing it. The kids love him. They come back and visit him at every vacation. He's the type of person that students will remember 10, 20, 30 years after graduation.
That video was incredible. Thanks again to our communications department. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Marcy Augustin, principal at Keith Elementary School. Dr. Augustin is speaking on behalf of Mrs. Jackie Girwin, the executive director of the Foundation for Excellence, as she could not be here this evening.
Thank you so much. So I am just one of the many trustees on the board for the Foundation for Excellence, and it's an amazing organization that provides funds for our classrooms, for our teachers, to be able to provide supplies, extra classroom tools, and needs beyond what the district's able to provide. It helps improve our classroom libraries, our opportunities for instruments and music rooms, leadership programs, STEM activities, and so much more. Our grant application requests for this year are over $102,000, but our budget is currently $40,000. So we have a need and a room full of amazing people who clearly care about our school district. So if you are interested in purchasing a ticket, let me know. We have our Foundation for Excellence Tuition Expedition raffle tickets going on right now, and that is just one of the ways that we're able to raise funds. Last year, in 2023, some highlights include that we were able to provide over $60,000 in classroom grants, which makes it a total of over $1 million since 1991 that the Foundation for Excellence has provided our students. Some other highlights from 2023, we provided $3,500 in the Schuman Performing Arts Grants. $2,500 went to the ATP program for their coffee carts program. We kicked off some kindergarten welcome kits this year, which were a highlight. We added four new members to our board, and thank you, staff, because you helped increase our Countdown Me donations so that we are now earning donations over $200 a month in addition to what we earned the year before. So right now, what you can do to help is buy a Tuition Expedition raffle ticket, sponsor the golf scramble through your business, or make a donation on the website through our funds. And this evening, teachers received a gift card to Big B Coffee, and the winners at each level will also receive a $100 donation. So thank you so much for listening a little bit about the FFE and supporting us.
Thank you, Dr. Augustin, and thank you to the Foundation for Excellence that supports our students and our classrooms and our buildings all the time. our students and our classrooms and our buildings all the time. The Wald Lake Schools Federal Credit Union are also big supporters of our students and our amazing teachers. Please welcome Brian Feldpash and Connie Pino.
Good evening, my name is Brian Feldpash, I'm with Wald Lake Schools Federal Credit Union, and I'm with my colleague Connie Pino over here. We've been with the credit union for two, two and a half years, but the credit union has existed for about 74 years, and we started out with 300 teachers who formed the credit union, and we started working out of the superintendent's office. Since then, we have grown to our own office, which is right across from Wald Lake Central High School, and we have 5,400 members. We only service the school district pretty much, it's a little bit unusual today for credit unions, they pretty much will service anybody who walks in the door, but we only service faculty, students, and their families, as well as retirees, and then city employees for Wald Lake, Wilksum, Commerce Township, and Wolverine Lake. So we're not open to the general public, we specifically service teachers. So what's rewarding for Connie and I, we've only been here for a short time, but our goal has really been to get involved with the community and specifically with the school system, because the schools are the reason we exist. So, when we get opportunities to give some extra acknowledgement for Teacher of the Year, we like to do so. So, we have a few gift baskets here today for our winners, for the, the winners, and we'll call them up one at a time to do an individual shot, and then if you want to stay up here, we'll do a group shot of all three of you. So if Christine Hubbell wants to come back up. And Barbara Stahursky. And David Rogers. Congratulations, and thank you guys for everything you do, and thank you for letting us be a part of the event tonight.
Thank you, Brian. So now that our three nominees sat down, I'm gonna ask you to come right back up. I'm gonna ask you to line up over here. Dr. Burnia and Mr. Peterson, could you come up to the front, please? So much like before, I'm gonna do a little bit of a special description, and this is from their, this is from their essays of why they teach, so I'm gonna call them up individually, and when you do, please stand exactly where you were before, we have another plaque, and then you can shake hands again, and this time, we'll, we'll, we'll have you stand right next to the folks in the front. Sound good? Okay. Our Elementary Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Christine Hubbell from Wilksum Elementary School. Mrs. Hubbell wrote, "Teaching is an art. One must have a natural ability to connect with children, an inspiring demeanor, and a love for education. Above all, a successful teacher will never stop growing in their craft. I truly value human connection and relationships as the cornerstones of success and well-being. I teach because relationships are important. When a child feels important and loved by someone, that person can inspire them to do great things. Throughout my life, I have been inspired and encouraged by countless others. Teachers, my parents, directors, coaches, and colleagues have helped me to see my self-worth and my ability. I pride myself on being an inspiring adult in my students' lives as well. I know that each child that walks into our school has the potential for greatness. They already have what it takes, yet they may need encouragement to see their greatness and worth. I smile and greet every child that passes by in the hallway. I have found those simple greetings have a profound impact on children and may even change the course of their day. Education only happens when a positive relationship has been established and a child has been inspired to learn. Teachers must also have a passion for what they are teaching and a love for education. I continue to search for new ways to present material for my students engagingly and memorably, even if it means dressing up in a full body suit representing the circulatory and digestive systems during our Living Systems Unit. I teach because I value education. I teach because there is no other profession that calls to me so loudly. I teach because relationships matter, inspiring others inspires me. I teach because it's just who I am." Congratulations to our Elementary Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Christine Hubbell. Our Middle School Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Barb Stahursky. Some excerpts from Barb's essay. Teaching special education is more than a profession for me, it's always been a passion. Witnessing the transformation of students is an unparalleled experience. Each day presents a new challenge, a new hope, and a new experience. Teaching is not merely about conveying information, it's about fostering growth and instilling confidence, being supportive and teaching the kids that they are capable of achieving on their own. The heart of teaching lies in the profound connections formed with students. Interactions are an opportunity to inspire, support, and guide students both educationally and personally. The bond between a teacher and their students goes beyond the classroom. It's a relationship built on trust, encouragement, and mutual respect. It's this bond that makes teaching a labor of love, where the successes and achievement of students become the ultimate source of fulfillment for me. The thrill of seeing a once-confused expression shift to one of understanding is simply amazing. Teaching special education students also means embracing challenges. It's adapting to diverse learning styles and finding creative ways to engage and creating an environment where making mistakes is seen as an opportunity for growth. Watching students face their challenges fosters not just academic success, but life skills that extend beyond the classroom. Being committed to nurturing minds and encourage growth for academically, for them academically and personally is why I teach. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Barb Stahursky, our Middle School Teacher of the Year. High School Teacher of the Year, Mr. Dave Rogers. Here are excerpts from Dave's essay. As the band director at Wald Lake Central High School since 1995, I have led the band to an inordinate amount of accolades. We are the only school, we are the only school in the district to have been selected to perform as one of the top in-state concert bands at the Michigan Music Conference, and we have been selected twice. During my tenure, we have won four marching band state championships, six bands of America multi-state regional championships, we have medaled at the state championships 16 times, we have six top 30 finishes at the Bands of America Grand Nationals Championships, and we now have medaled at Grand Nationals in Class AAA, we were the second band in state history to ever be selected to perform in the iconic Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, performing for 3 million people live and 50 million people on television. But it's not about any of that. When the students joined the band at Wald Lake Central, and now Wald Lake Marching Band, they learned to dream big, set high goals to motivate, and they learned to follow a process to achieve those goals. Most of all, they learned to work hard, really hard. The most satisfying part of my job is the relationships it has afforded me. My program builds community at both the student and parent level. The intensity of what we do forges deep bonds. The relationships I've developed throughout my teaching career are my riches. I have wonderful relationships, not just with students and parents, but also with so many of my colleagues. Teaching is a privilege that I do not take for granted. In the end, it comes down to relationships, experiences, and giving students the tools to not only excel in music performance, but to succeed in anything they pursue. This is why I teach. It is my honor to present Mr. Dave Rogers as our High School Teacher of the Year. So let's give all three a big round of applause. So we're about to make some history here in Wald Lake Schools. This is the first year that our top three teachers were ranked based on nomination forms and essays. Please know that this decision was extremely difficult, and it's very hard to separate the best of the best. These three will be receiving an additional award for our outstanding countless contributions to our students, staff, parents, and community. With that being said, I would like to announce our third place winner, Ms. Barb Stahursky, our second place winner, Ms. Christine Hubbell, and our first place winner, Wald Lake Schools' District of the Teacher, Teacher of the Year, Mr. Dave Rogers. At this time, please give a warm welcome to our special guest this evening, Mr. John Rossi and the team at LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram right here in Wald Lake.
Wow, this is a, this is incredible, thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of this, it's, it's really wonderful to see, you know, the, the respect and the family that the teacher community has. So, my name is John Rossi, I'm the General Manager at LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram in Wald Lake, and we're thrilled to honor three exceptional teachers who have made an incredible impact on the students of Wald Lake Consolidated Schools. At LaFontaine Automotive Group, it's our mission to build lifelong relationships, strengthen communities, and personalize the automotive experience. And tonight, we're proud to recognize these remarkable individuals who embody our mission with their dedication to giving back. Thank you for all you do. All right, our third place winner, Mrs. Stahursky, receives $500 towards her classroom, thank you very much. All right, our second place winner, Mrs. Christine Hubbell, will receive $1,000 towards her classroom. All right, and our first place winner, Mr. Dave Rogers, will receive a two-year lease on a brand-new Jeep. Thank you, teachers. You guys can all, teachers, you go back to seats. Dr. Burnia, Mr. Peterson, you can take back your seats. Well, I hope you found that as exciting as I did. Between, between the Wald Lake Schools Federal Union, the Federal Credit Union, the FFE, and I want to make sure I get all of the brand names here, LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, what a, what an amazing supportive community that, that we live in and, or that you live in and that we work in, so I'm very happy, I'm very happy for all the teachers today. That concludes our, our Teacher of the Year program, but before we, I believe we're gonna take a couple-minute break before we start our, our, our board meeting, our business portion of the board meeting, I want to take a minute to thank Ms. Kelly Byer, our HR Secretary who puts all, a lot of this together. I also, I also want to take a minute to thank all of the nominations, people who gave the nominations and wrote the nominations, and all the people who served on committees to determine our Teacher of the Year for each building and for the, at each level. It was really, it's, it's not, it's not a small amount of work, and, and it, it holds a lot of weight, people carry a lot of burden about, you know, picking people, and we make sure it's a good process, so I want to thank them for their time. Thank you, and then thank you all for attending tonight, thank you, Dr. Burnia, and the Board of Education, and for all of the support that we receive all year long. Dr. Burnia.
To let some of you that would like to leave, before we get into our hardcore part of the meeting, we'll resume at about 8:17, is that okay? Thank you. Thank you.[386.28]
We'll continue on with our meeting tonight. And next agenda item is our public commentary. So going into that, as a new board leader, I'll just let you know that I do know the rules. And I will kind of recant them if you would like me to, but I will just like to really more call attention to our newest gizmo technological advance. We now have a real-time countdown three-minute clock. So to help us all and yourselves, those that participate. So for no ado or from further ado, we will go to our first Becky Behrens.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Bernia and cabinet members. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Dr. Becky Behrens, and I want to continue making comments about reading issues as a follow-up to where I began several months ago. As you know, there are two camps debating with each other as to the better way to teach reading, especially to K-2 students. One is known as the Balanced Literacy Group with Lucy Cawkins' methods as the prime instructional material taught to education majors, and the other is the Science of Reading Camp, which emphasizes phonics and decoding. There's been pushback against the overemphasis of phonics. But those professors and specialists who are most familiar with the Science of Reading Camp understand that the body of research that's the basis for the science of reading does not equate solely with phonics. It also emphasizes language comprehension and building vocabulary. Lucy Cawkins, the guru of the Balanced Literacy approach, said this in 2019. "Science of reading was the new hype about phonics, and it was being promoted by people concerned about children with dyslexia as a Trojan horse to emphasize phonics at the expense of everything else." Two years later, however, in 2021, Cawkins and crew finally really looked at the science of reading research, which, by the way, had been around for decades. They decided that their approach needed rebalancing. Did you catch that? The Balanced Literacy approach needed rebalancing. She recommended that all beginning readers need decodable books, that is, books with patterns they have been taught, and she moved away from her cueing strategies. She acknowledged that having kids look at pictures in an effort to guess at a word was inefficient. And it, quote, and I quote her, "It might not allow written words to get into a child's long-term memory." In addition, Cawkins said, "You know, nothing that we do is perfect. You know, it's only the best that we know." Wow. The best that you know when professors and researchers have been challenging your methods for several decades. She also said, "We like messed up, and there are things she regrets and would do differently." When I hear that our school district is using material that Cawkins has rebalanced, I am very uncomfortable with that. Her approach left generations of students without proper reading training. So now we are to believe that it's okay that she's the one to correct the situation when she clearly did not get what the real problems were for decades. Heinemann Publishers, which publishes Cawkins' curricula, made at least $1.6 billion since publishing her methods for over a decade. Maybe it's a case of don't rock the financial boat. I implore our reading specialists in the school district to take a look at this issue. Don't just rely on your past training in how to teach reading. The future of the next generation of children is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up on our agenda is Tim Sawmiller. Is Tim here? Well, share with us.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. I'm a cisgender male using pronouns he, him, and his. In December, this board considered a bid award for the purchase of 10 school buses intended to replace aging buses that will be passing the recommended usage limit of 10 years. This was voted down four to three. Shortly before, there was a well-prepared comment from some Wald Lake Northern High School baseball players, asking the board to consider replacing the infield with turf since that field has water problems. Those students came in with a great suggestion as well, which was to look for some corporate-sponsored syrup and awarding naming rights to help pay for the field replacement. When it came to the bus purchase discussion, two of those eventual no voters mentioned priorities, with one suggesting that maybe fewer buses could be purchased so as to cover the baseball turf replacement. Those students already gave you a suggestion for covering those costs. Dr. Bernia asked for time to study the matter and correctly said that if one field is replaced, then the turf at all three high schools should be replaced. One no voter had voiced issues and understandably made no comment, while the fourth no voter, who is normally loquacious on issues before the board and likes to mention his former bus-driving involvement, said absolutely nothing, lacking some transparency there. Maybe he likes driving rattletrap buses. So the priority is ball fields over getting students to and from school in safe buses? Really? No good reasons were offered for the nay votes. This is just scoring political points in the name of prioritizing. So yes, there is politics involved in board decisions. The 2019 bond issue, which was approved by the voters in this school district, specifically mentioned replacing school buses, it said nothing about baseball fields. The voters in this school district have already given this board their priorities. The four board members who voted no have circumvented the will of the voters, feigning fiscal responsibility while letting aging school buses break down and allowing inflation drive up the cost of new buses. So what happens now? Wait a year and try again? Those buses will cost more a year from now since inflation is always with us. Just a 2% increase will make those buses cost nearly $27,000 more. Is that a prudent way to manage this school district's money? I urge this board to reconsider that bus purchase because the buses are needed, and that is what the voters want. Thank you.
Thank you for your commentary. Next up, Christine Titus.
Good evening and Happy New Year, and congratulations to all of the Teachers of the Year I've had the pleasure of being mentored by and working alongside many of them. Before I get started on my comments, I would like to just have you know that I respectfully disagree with Dr. Becky's comments. As an instructional specialist in this district, I've seen positive, positive results from the teaching I've done using our board-approved curriculum in our district. Moving on to my other comments. A former colleague of mine has a Word of the Year each year. Thank you for the idea, Paula Mather. And I have one for you to consider this evening, particularly this evening as we honor our Teacher of the Years. That word is mindful or mindfulness. I first embraced this word when chaperoning the eighth-grade students to our nation's capital, and we were actually in the middle of Arlington National Cemetery, participating in some moments of mindfulness as we honored a fallen military member that was from Michigan. It's one of the most memorable moments I've had in my life, and just being in that place is, talk about mindfulness. It's a time to pause, think, and remember what we're here for. So I would encourage your mindfulness, as we've heard about and honored my colleagues this evening and those that came to support them. They are nominated by parents, students, fellow teachers, and members of the community, of which I'm a member, 32-year member of Commerce Township. Please be mindful of the fact that they are a piece of the education puzzle that adds to the success of those students that we keep at the top of our minds each day. I would ask that we all be mindful of our comments and actions as we all seek to do our best for our students and our Wald Lake community. I humbly thank you.
Thank you for your commentary. Next up, Nancy Van Lewen.
Good evening. I will not be redundant and reiterate the words of a previous speaker, but I too was appalled at the four zero, or four people who voted against the buses last month. I thought it showed a level of disrespect for our Transportation Department who requested those buses, a level of disrespect for our Operations Department who put those bids together and said, "Yes, Dean, transportation does need these buses." I thought it showed a level of disrespect for Dr. Bernia and Mrs. Casa Grande, who eventually had that issue placed on the agenda. I thought it showed a huge amount of disrespect for the thousands of voters who voted on the bond issue, knowing that it was partial to purchase buses. And I also thought it showed a great level of disrespect for the thousands of students that are transported on a daily basis around this district on buses. So I was terribly sorry at that vote. I was shocked. On another note, congratulations to the Teachers of the Year. I think it's one of the most remarkable things we do. I also do, though, want us to all remember the other hundreds of teachers who were not recognized and hope that in whatever way you can, as a public, as board members, as administrators, recognize those teachers you bump into along the way who spend their careers dedicated to our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your commentary. And that will conclude our public commentary for this evening, and we'll move on to administrative commentary and Dr. Bernia.
We're going to start to my left tonight with Mrs. Omer. Mr. Russo. Mr. Chatfield. Ms. Muir. Across the way to Mrs. Kohansky.
Nothing tonight, Dr. Bernia.
Mr. Durkin.
Nothing tonight, Dr. Bernia.
Dr. Lons.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Clean sweep. I do want to thank Mr. Russo and his team for putting together our Teacher of the Year recognition, and then Mr. Durkin and his team for supporting that process. A big happening happened for us this week where our Unified Basketball Team from Wald Lake Central got to go down and play at Little Caesars Arena at the showcase that they hosted there. And sitting in the back of the room is one of our School Resource Officers, Nick Kraft. Nick is the School Resource Officer at Wald Lake Central, and he volunteers his time to coach our Unified Sports Teams. And when I think about the controversy in our society, and I think about the ongoing public debate about police officers, I think about Nick Kraft and his dedication and the support that he provides and the care that he provides. When you go to Wald Lake Central, the kids there, they respect him, but they appreciate him because he knows why, they know why he's there, and he dedicates himself and his time there, and I'm so grateful for the work that you do. So I wanted to make a special mention of that and thank you for all that you do. That's it from me, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Now we'll move on to board commentary, and we will start with Mrs. Casa Grande.
Thank you. So usually, we try not to repeat things up here, but you know, it's our teachers this year and this month, and January is always my favorite board meeting because we get to share that with the teachers, and we know that we would not be here and be able to have a district without all of the hard work and sometimes not so appreciated work that our teachers do. So please know, you know, from heartfelt, we really appreciate you. We know what you do. Just being in a classroom volunteering throughout the years with my four boys, I just, I don't know how you do it. You're wonderful. You have such patience, and then you teach them, too, and it's amazing. And it's not just the books and what they're learning to take a test. It's seeing how they come out as citizens. So I just want to heartfelt say thank you. And I don't like the spotlight, but I want to tell you that it has been my absolute pleasure to work with Dr. Bernia his first year as the president of the board. I felt it was, I was humbled and honored that our board wanted me to do that, and also that all of us are leaders here on this board. It doesn't matter where we sit. We just may have a little different role. But for anybody to continue to sit here and be, you know, a school board member and work with community members, we do it because it's a labor of love and because we want to be here for public education. So I am so glad that I got to talk to Dr. Bernia almost every single day. But honestly, it has been my pleasure, and I appreciate the support from the community and from this board. Thank you.
Mrs. Levin.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I think tonight it's okay to echo each other and say congratulations to all of the teachers. Like Ms. Van Lewen said, congratulations to all the teachers that weren't up here. You know, in a giant district like ours, it's, I know, a very hard task to narrow it down to, you know, just the top from each school. And, you know, there are hard-working teachers in every building every day, and we do appreciate everything that you do. I'm looking forward to the Martin Luther King event on Monday night, you know, but also not just for the event, but for the reminder of what he stood for. I think that his words are always a great reminder for us to look back on. I'm also looking forward to getting started on our strategic plan thinking. Prior to this regular meeting tonight, the board had a presentation from one of the companies that we're considering to help us along that path. You know, I'm reminded of another quote, or I was looking for a Martin Luther King quote about goals. Couldn't really find a great one, but this one is one that I am reminded about. "A dream without a plan is just a wish," and I am pleased that the work will start to make the dreams of our district a reality on paper and give us that map, that guide going forward. So thank you to Dr. Bernia and your team for all the work that you have done and a lot of the work that's going to be coming for all of us. I'm looking forward to getting that started. Thank you.
Mr. Siegler.
Mr. Peterson. Again, I am going to do some repetition. First of all, Mrs. Casa Grande, again, thank you. Thank you for taking that home. Thank you for helping to direct us and offer wisdom and advice and for just being there, for being the person that you are. And to Mr. Peterson, wishing you a wonderful year. As the second village elder on the table here, a belated happy birthday. And I had to do that, Craig. I'm sorry. So, you know, we have a lot in front of us. We have a lot of opportunity as a board. Tonight was an amazing event. I have always loved the awards and the award presentation, and it was really interesting tonight because six of our therapy dogs were actually in the room. I think they wanted to have a Cousins Club reunion, but it didn't happen. Mr. Russo, again, to you and to our, to all, to everybody that was involved, thank you. I mean, to have a community company sponsor a vehicle for Teacher of the Year, something we have never done and never had the opportunity of doing. It speaks loudly to the community and to our staff of how the community values them, and look forward to seeing everybody Monday evening.
I, of course, am going to echo everybody else. I just want to, as staff, as teachers in this community, I am so humbled by every single one of you. We have an amazing, an amazing district of teachers, and just because they weren't here tonight doesn't mean next year they won't be. On that list, or they weren't on the list last year, but it is my privilege to sit in this position and look at such an honorable, fantastic staff, and I appreciate every single one of those teachers and everything that they do for our school. So I just want to say thank you to them all for that.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. And I just want to add, first of all, I want to thank my fellow board members again for this honor to lead the board in 2024. Historically, for me, I probably have had a much higher, more loftier look at the district as a whole, and there is a lot of exciting and interesting things going on with this year's district, and I'll just go kind of recant them a little bit. That's over and above what happens every day. There is a new excitement here within the board, within the administration, on moving forward on a new vision, mission, and a strategic plan for the district. It's been fairly long time since this has happened. That's extremely exciting. Secondarily, the continuation of the facility study and its, the work that needs to be done relative to that study in 2023 is really vital to this district. But unfortunately, it gives us a couple of crossroads at times. One's going to be that we have already discussed for a potential bond to help in the refacilitating, repurposing in some of the facilities. That's the positive side, if all that works out. But there is a negative side. If that doesn't work out, it makes the job for our administration and this board a lot tougher in trying to find some solutions. So, but it's very exciting when you think about it. It's not something that's happened or does happen that often in this district and any district. So I'm quite confident that this school board, representatively, is up to the task. There's a great blending experience and a lot of drive. So I'll, again, thank them all for that. Move on to our consent agenda. And in the consent agenda tonight is approval of minutes. Proposed November 29th, December 7th, December 7th, December 18th. Personal recommendations, new hires and resignations. A financial report from November 2023. Disbursement in the amount of $20,584,592. Balance sheet and statement of revenues and expenditures, unaudited and investment scheduled. Purchases under $50,000. Oakland Schools eliminate software. It's an annual review at $28,811, and that's from the general fund. A expenditure to sideline sports for high school and middle school bleacher repairs at the cost of $31,945. That's out of the general fund. And our Head Start Director's Report.
Mr. Peterson.
Ms. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Can we move on to a vote? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes five-zero. And we'll move on to purchases over $50,000, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Bernia.
Sure. Our first purchase tonight comes from Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. I recommend that the Board of Education exercises our option to purchase Chromebooks through Hewlett Packard Financial Services Company, a total of 900 Chromebooks for a total cost of $46,658.99. It will come out of the general fund.
Mr. Peterson.
Mrs. Casa Grande.
I move that the Board of Education approve the option to purchase Chromebooks. The quantity is 900 and the amount of $46,658.99 paid out of the general fund and approved after Michael Lons, Deputy Superintendent, to authorize the option-to-purchase agreement with Hewlett Packard Financial Services Company.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, we'll move on to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
We are now going to move down to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. This recommendation is for the preparation of fire evacuation and shelter signage for all of our buildings. The new signage will be room-specific in accordance with the National Fire Prevention Association guidelines to quickly and easily direct students and staff to appropriate exits and shelters in the event of a fire or tornado. We recommend awarding this project to Fire Safety Displays Company in the amount of $152,200, and this project will be funded through the 97D Safety and Security Grant awarded by the state of Michigan.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase and installation of district-wide emergency evacuation signs provided by Fire Safety Display Company for $152,200 in the school safety grant.
Any discussion?
Mr. Peterson.
And Mrs. Casa Grande.
Just for a moment of clarity and transparency, there was, I think, a good question that a board member asked, you know, does this cover Western High School? And I believe, Mr. Chatfield, that is in a separate budget. Is that correct?
At this time, Western High School is not included in this proposal. We will hold off on producing the signage for Western. It'll probably occur over a couple of phases. One, when the new addition is completed and opened this fall, and number two, when the remainder of the school finishes its renovation work over the course of the next two years.
Right, because we want to make sure that it's accurate.
Correct. Yeah, I'll point out, every one of the signs that will go into each classroom is unique to that classroom. So every single classroom will have its own distinct sign that tells the occupants where to go in the event of an emergency.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I have a couple of quick questions. Number one, is that coming out of the 2023 school safety grant or the 2024 school safety grant? 2023?
2023.
Okay, 2023. And the second question is just, I think it's more of a clarity question, is that this has been an ongoing, as part of our safety and security initiative, to look at all these different areas. Some seem not as glossy or not as glamorous, but this is just another kind of piece in the puzzle in the long term. So I appreciate we've taken the time, we're kind of staying with our agenda, and so we'll move forward. If the discussion is closed, we'll go to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved, five-zero.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the next board agenda item, resolution, board review of Head Start program.
I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. In accordance with the federal Head Start performance standards, the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education is the governing body of the district's Head Start program. To comply with all federal contract regulations, Wald Lake Schools Head Start is requesting the board review the items listed below and is requesting the board's approval of the governing body conflict of interest and personnel policy for the 2024-25 school year. All items were approved by the Head Start Policy Committee. The school board request for review is of the Code of Operations, which includes standard of conduct and grievance procedure. Also, the school board request for approval covers the personnel policy and governing body conflict of interest.
Ms. Kaplan.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2024 to 25 Head Start governing body conflict of interest and personnel policy for the 2024 to 25 school year as presented.
Any discussion? And we'll move on to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero. And the next agenda item is board policy review, and I will turn that over to Dr. Bernia.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Board members received a policy update for the first reading. These will come back for your action for approval on the February 1st, 2024 board meeting. I do think there is some important context to share with the community. I know that there has been considerable news coverage about policies related to safety and security. Our board policy comes from Miller Johnson, and Miller Johnson provided us with an update in the fall, in November-ish, around Thanksgiving, related to updates of those policies. And I want to thank the Policy Subcommittee for supporting the decision to pull that forward ahead of the agenda of work that we had planned and moving that forward so that we could bring those policies and administrative regulations forward and make sure that we have everything updated in an accessible way. I thought that was a really important statement from not just the Policy Subcommittee, but the support of the entire board. So, and I think that that's worth the community noting. So those are for your consideration. We will take your questions over the next month and have our normal give-and-take approach, and then we will come back for an action item on that on February 1st.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. And with that, we will conclude. This meeting is adjourned.